Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Angelinos and visitors. Welcome to your regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
De Leon, Harris Dawson Hernandez Hutt, Krikorian Lee, MacOscar Padilla Park, Price, Roman Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, fourteen members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business.
My pleasure, Council President. If you're able, please stand, face the flag, place your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have Mr. Herman and at least one other disruptor. Those are the first warnings for both. Mr. Herman continues. Camille is the other one. Mr. Herman continues to disrupt. Those are your last warnings. Press members, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recuse myself from items two and twenty-one because my wife's employer has worked with the applicant on this item. And out of abundance of caution, the city attorney has asked me to recuse myself from item twenty-four due to the fact that I am a landlord.
All right.
And before we move on, I believe that was Adam Smith who yelled out while Mr. Price was speaking. Mr. Smith, this is your first and only warning. Please do not disrupt this meeting.
We have someone here from the, we have Mr. Seha from the C A O.'s office with regard to item twelve, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm, I'm, I will say that I think it's unfortunate that as a council, we're not getting the presentation that B F I. got because B F I.'s only a handful of members and for such an important report, like we should be, we should have gotten a report here in full council. That's all I gotta say. I think it's really unfortunate that that didn't happen. But my question is, when it talks about item number three in the report, instruct departments to absorb overspending within their budgeted resources and adjust operations where necessary to do so, does this include future liability costs?
With regard to future liability costs, are you referring to settlements and judgments that may come before this council?
Yes.
In those cases, those unfortunately are not costs that are typically charged back to departments, if you will, with one exception being any salary costs due to, you know, some type of employment case. That's why we have a liability account to pay for those things and unfortunately this year, that has been exhausted.
And so that's why I asked that question. If that account has been exhausted and this, this item right here says, insofar as they require use of the general funds in the item before, would this not, why, why aren't we having the departments take that on if that money is then going to be pulled from the general fund?
Well, because when it comes to liability cases, at that, you know, in many cases, it's related to instances or scenarios that happened many years before, even the general manager or new general managers there managing that department. Some of these cases are four or five years old, coming to a close through a settlement or a judgment. And so it's, it's not something that we are able to budget for within departments' resources. That's why, again, we have to set aside money every year for, for those cases.
Great, thank you. I had, I have other questions, but without having the report being presented to us, I don't think that they matter being asked because it won't make sense without the context. So, thank you.
Councilmember De Leon.
We need everybody who's booing to remain quiet so we can continue at this meeting. If you continue, so. Sargent, can we please identify who was, that was? Okay. To anybody who's booing and stopping this meeting from continuing, again, you are subject to warnings and potential removal from this meeting. So please keep your boos quiet while we're trying to conduct the meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item twenty-one for comments as well. Item twenty-one for comments.
Are you, you're asking for a special?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just forgot to, it's not in the consent file.
As long as we didn't vote on it, I think.
We did not vote on it.
Okay, good. So we'll come back to it.
Thank you, Council President. And I don't know if you heard earlier, Matt, but I was really hoping that we would get that same presentation or similar presentation that B F I. got. I think it's unfortunate that we didn't get it here, especially when things are so dire in our budget. So I just want to share that with you now that you're here. But for item number five on the instructions, instruct the C A O. and request the city attorney to report on potential strategies to limit future liability payouts. What does that look like? Because I've heard from attorneys that have worked cases opposition to the city attorney or particularly around police liability, around police violence. And what those attorneys have shared with me is that sometimes they'll offer to settle in the beginning of the case, but the city attorney fights it and fights it, prolonging the case, increasing the cost of what the settlement would be, increasing the lawyer's fees for the, for the opposition of these cases. Is that what we're looking to reduce? Are we looking, like, I would love to also see, do you have an itemized list of what one of these settlement looks like? Like what, what are most of these settlement dollars going to? Are they going to legal fees or are they going to actually people harmed? Because if it's going to legal fees, then we need to really assess, like, why do we keep fighting these cases if they're leading to such large payouts? Like if we mess up, let's just be accountable and not add additional costs for, for, for at the end, just to be held accountable for messing up. And I know that we try to defend, we don't try to be liable as a city, but this is just ridiculous seeing these costs and how long these cases are prolonged for. So that's what I would like to see, an itemized assessment of a couple of settlement cases to look at what those numbers are, but also if you could just kind of dive into what instruction number five could actually look like.
And thank you. And that is, that is the intent of, of instruction number five. That is, that, that would be part of the analysis that we would bring back to the council. We have seen the number and magnitude of the settlements and judgments increase dramatically over the past two years. Historically, over the last six or seven years, we have been able to maintain our liability at around the hundred million dollar a year level. Last year, it far, far exceeded that by more than a hundred million. And then, of course, this year, where we budgeted a hundred million for liability claims, we have already incurred two hundred and sixty million dollars and it is only October. So that, we need to conduct that analysis, present it to the council. The amending motion that I heard introduced will also provide, that, that will also provide important comparative analysis to see what's happening in our city, how that compares to similar, similar settlements and judgments in other cities so that we can try to narrow in on and focus in on how we can reduce that liability.
Got it, thank you. And I know before, before you came, I had, we were talking about liability costs and instruction number three, or yeah, instruction number three around having departments absorb some of their overspending, why does that not include liability costs? I know that these cases are from the past, but it's still the same department and some of these are for employment, some of them are for work, workplace, you know, hostile, like environments, like sometimes it's time to learn a lesson. So why aren't we having departments be responsible for some of those actions?
That, that is a conversation that we, that we can have and should have. This has been, we have discussed this in, in prior years. It has typically run up against the reality that should you have an extraordinary judgment against the Department of Transportation or Department of Street Services, for example, for a fifteen or twenty million dollar judgment, that that could significantly cripple the, that department in that given year for its base operations. So we would need to figure out how to manage that if it's the desire of the council to hold departments more accountable for actions of, of their employees that would lead to, to liability payouts. We, we should have that conversation, but we also need to be mindful of significant consequences and negative consequences it could have on basic services.
Agreed. And maybe it's not the full fifteen million, maybe we can start off at a percentage, like this is what you will be respons, this, this percentage of your liability costs is what you'll be responsible for. And if those conversations have been happening for years and we still haven't come to a conclusion, please tell us or can we have that serious conversation and finally get this over the finish line? Because it's like history is repeating itself and now we've inherited a budget that it's going to take us a long time to fix. So I would hope that we can finally get that across the finish line. So please you let us know what we need to do or who needs to be at the table to make that happen, please.
Okay, understood. And that, that will be a component of, of the report back that we'll provide.
Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for raising that point because that's a point, it's, it's a point that we have to continue to discuss and I appreciate the motion introduced by Councilmember Yaroslavski and Councilmember Park today.
Sorry, Mr. Krikorian, let's stop. Somebody's having a medical problem in the back that we need to either get them care or...
Yeah, maybe we can get them care outside of the council chambers.
We can get them, and, and now Jason Reedy's disrupting the meeting. First warning. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you. It happens every day that we get many, many cases about. I think a strong argument can be made and I just want to give an example of one time that I tried to impose this when I was on the claims board, when the Department of Recreation and Parks, you know, Mr. President, this is ridiculous, I'm sorry. Can we deal with the situation?
Yeah, if we can't...
Just get them out, please.
Yeah, this, this person who's coughing has disrupted the meeting several times. We're going to ask them to leave.
I'm going to guess it's going to be contagious, too.
Yeah.
And Camille Lewis, you've also been warned already. So you were disrupting the, the comments made by Councilmember Krikorian. So please do not disrupt this meeting or you will be subject to removal.
Yeah, we're speaking all items and non-agenda public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bar License three seventeen, two seventeen, in my complaint. Well, we know that on item twenty, we have a rescinding console on this fucking path on homelessness. But what does that dumb bitch know about birria when we know that Noodles has done really nothing to compromise the path and the bridge between what David O. Carter has said at the Brentwood and UCLA, suck a dick, to transfer thirty-seven, eight, eight, two to the general city purpose? No, bitch! Judge Carter ordered you to build fucking housing for veterans, you dumb cunt! And instruct and authorize the fucking clerk, you up there, China boys, to process the neighborhood coalition to fix this fucking enterprise of criminal corruption and development. That's the path and that's the bridge I'm connecting to, pumpkin head! Then, on Kevin De Leon, who never would say fuck the police, but the other candidate did, fuck her too! Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, in her support to instruct L A. H D. obligate funds to project funds to be transferred. Is this stealing? I don't know. Let's ask the goat guy. Oh, he don't know, he too fucking busy talking to Hernandez. But I'll ask the controller to look into the instructions that David O. Carter, the judge, ordered you white niggers to, to fix the housing problems.
Which item are you speaking to?
Oh, pumpkin head, I only get sixty seconds and you interrupted me? Don't do that. That is gross, grope.
Which item are you speaking to?
Well, now I'm on C D. fourteen, motherfucker, which is twenty-three. Isn't that up on the board?
So item twenty-three, if you were listening, was continued.
Oh, you're right. I, I meant twenty-four, nigga, because I don't, I can't read. I can't read on the flexibility and design and policies of the fucking landlords who raised the rents against me, a white nigga too, who's trying to save America from the overcharging of rent control in which, again, only Kevin De Leon can save us from this shit. After all, I'm not the one saying fuck the police, she said it. Besides that, to resolve the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four state legislative program, which I don't propose and support, fuck all rent, fuck all landlords, and fuck the city of Los Angeles for allowing this shit to happen. Fuck you! Now for my general public comment. So, we all understand that Brentwood and UCLA, suck a dick, is in a lot of trouble with Judge David O. Carter, who put his military boot up your ass for stealing. Steve Soboroff is a fucking criminal and that's the reason why he's no longer on the L A. P. D. Police Commission in which we should audit and investigate what criminal problems he created with L A. P. D. Fuck the police, niggas with attitude. That's my problem. I will always have a problem with the police because the goddamn police is to protect and serve, not watch and watch and see that we have these fucking people sleeping on our fucking sidewalk and streets while the fucking mayor, that goddamn fucking twat, doesn't do a goddamn thing to save me from all this shit. So in other words, forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-three politely, fuck the police!
Okay, before the next speaker comes up, I, I understand that the words and the language that Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, your time is done. You have already been warned. Please vacate the podium.
Thank you.
So, for everybody who's here, if this is your first time, do apologize. Mr. Herman uses incredibly incre, speaker? Speaker, please listen to what I'm saying, speaker. This is your first and only warning. Please, before you say anything, listen to what I'm about to say. So, speaker, please...
Pastor Thomas, you're disrupting the meeting. I am so sorry you're disrupting me. It is your first warning.
So, if you just listen...
This is your second warning.
Again, so, what I'm trying to say is that we recognize, so, the, the speaker using the black cap, unfortunately...
All right, Pastor Thomas, your excuse for the meeting. Pastor Thomas, we're asking you to leave the meeting.
Okay, so, Pastor, I apologize, you, you have been excused from this meeting. So, again, we apologize for the offensive language that's used by Mr. Herman and I suspect will be used by other speakers during their public comment. We do, so, they are trying to, my guess is, is bait people in to interrupting this meeting to voice their opinions about being offended. So we hear you, but we have to allow it during the public comment. If it happens again outside of the, their specific individual public comment period, we will address it as a disruption to this meeting. But during public comment, please don't give them the time of day and do what they want you to do, which is essentially to interrupt the meeting, which forces us to warn the people who are stopping the public comment from continuing. So, again, none of this is condoned or, or approved by city council. It is a part of the public comment process.
I want to thank you for sharing Tommy's legacy and our city for your commitment to giving kids across Los Angeles access to high-quality athletic facilities. Mr. President, I'm sorry, we have such very rude guests here today. We're discussing this right here, yes, yeah. Very rude and very disrespectful.
Look, if, if, if... Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, so, if I could have, so the gentleman in the, in the vest who's pointing and the black cap with the red mark on it, this is your first and only warning, please do not disrupt this meeting or else you will be subject to removal.
Mr. White, you're disrupting the meeting. That's your second warning. Look...
Mr. President, I respectfully ask for an eye vote. I respectfully ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. The motion is passed and thank you for your gift to the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call more names.
Good morning, homie, number seventeen. To support L A. P. D., yes, absolutely. I support every single agenda that supports L A. P. D. department. We need additional police services in the District Twelve. I don't know whose district it is, but I know right now there's a criminal looting, criminal rioting, criminal robbery, criminal rapist, a criminal interruption on all areas, everywhere in the city of L.A. So we need definitely support whatever council member who are supporting additional police services. This agenda talking about Topanga Division and then I am familiar with that division and then in that division, they need, they, they are a huge staffing shortage of L A. P. D. officer, those L A. P. D. patrol officer, they are working sixty hours, seventy hours every week. They do not have a chance to enjoy with their family. That's not okay. I am here to support the L A. P. D. Topanga Division and the L A. P. D. all division. Good morning, homie, number eighteen. Regarding additional homeless services for Watts, I am here to support additional homeless per, homeless services. As a member of the homelessness, I never receive any services from my council member District One. If any council member wants to support additional homeless services, I am the number one supporter. I'll be the number one cheerleader. The only, the only issue is that everyone talking about additional homeless services in real life, no action. We are still, I'm still seeing a lot of violent removal of homelessness. I'm still seeing homeless people does not have a food, does not have water, sometimes even myself, I have to go to, I have to call Council, Council Hernandez, where can I get more food? Where can I get more water? So I definitely believe that we only talking about homeless, we never do much about homeless. Number twenty-two, good morning, my homie. Number twenty-two is about speeding bump and the speed table in the council District Two. I actually voiced my concern numerous times in this council that there are so many street takeover. Yesterday, there's a Dodger victory and then there's several Dodger fans did a street takeover. So we need more speed bump, we need more speed tables across all districts of the city of L.A. And then, right now, what I'm seeing without the speed bump, without speed bump, right now, even some, in certain intersection with speed bump, there are still so many street takeover, drivers doing donut, driving or, or taking over the street. So innocent people cannot use the intersection, cannot drive home peacefully and safely. General public comment, I am here to support Israel. I am here to support my Jewish brothers, Jewish sisters, my Jewish family in the city of Israel, country of Israel. You do not get a ceasefire after you invade our country. You will never get a ceasefire, you are still holding our hostages. You will never have a ceasefire when you continue to attack our country. I am here to support Israel.
Okay, can you, can you pause this time, really?
Mr. City Attorney, if, if we're going to have...
There will be no more ceasefire.
I'm sorry, speaker, 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 you're... Speaker, you're going to wait. Mr. City Attorney, I just want us to advise the folks in the gallery that if we can't conduct this meeting, we will clear the chambers and we will carry on with the council's business going forward.
Yes, so, again, I understand that people are talking about things that may be very offensive to other folks, but during their public comment, we need to allow them to speak. So, again, it does not reflect the views of this council, it does not reflect the view, like, just, i- i- if you continue to interrupt their public comment, then you yourself may be subject to a warning and potentially removal from this meeting. Sorry, go ahead.
There will be no ceasefire until you release Israeli hostages. There will be no ceasefire until you surrender. There will be no ceasefire until all of our Israeli brothers, Israeli sisters, Jewish brothers, Jewish sisters, return their home in Israel safely, safe and sound. There will be no ceasefire until all of the Israelis in Los Angeles can worship, can go to work, can go to school safely without harm. There will be no more ceasefire until you surrender.
Speaker, your time has expired.
So, I've come here a very long way from the great state of New York and item sixteen is trying to use council time on whether a Hollywood actor needs to have their name instated on Hollywood Boulevard. Well, if you're going to waste council time on whether a Hollywood actor's name is going to go on Hollywood Boulevard, how about addressing the fact that a Chomo actor by the name of Tom Cruise is still on Hollywood Boulevard? I'm here to protest Scientology and you best believe that if this council wants to waste its precious time concerning whether a Hollywood actor needs to be on the Hollywood Boulevard or not, how about addressing the fact that a Chomo simp like Tom Cruise is still on there, who's very affiliated with Scientology? And I'm at this point speaking more or less directly to you, Mr. City Attorney. If your office is out there wasting precious government time on whether a Chomo cult is able to have members of its affiliation have its name on there, that's absolutely disgusting. For seventeen, I am number seventeen. If the L A. P. D. is still requesting more time, yet when it comes to issuing a arrest warrant for a child sex predator who's a Scientologist by the name of Anthony Di Mauro Junior, and they're dragging their fucking feet on it, yet I can find out where this guy is located and do your damn job by communicating with Electronic Arts, this guy is streaming on Apex Legends, we have his fucking address, yet your office is out there not issuing an arrest warrant and the L A. P. D. apparently can't be bothered to do their fucking job and also arrest this guy. He's not the only child sex predator, so why is it that more funding for the L A. P. D. continues to not be used for arresting the real predators out there, the real dangers to the community, child sex predators? And now for general public comment.
Can you, one minute?
You dropped Serge's charges, you're going to drop my charges and you know it's bullshit. Vandalism, are you fucking kidding me? I was out there cleaning the fucking public easement and everybody in their mother agrees with me. I talked to three different off, three different officers on three different occasions that night, City Attorney. Look me in the fucking eye when I talk to you. I came here from all the way to the great state of New York to hunt down the child sex predators that apparently your own city cannot do and your office of law enforcement cannot be bothered to fucking do. What are you doing with your time, man? This is your legacy. If it needs to be, I will come there and protest your house for you being a Chomo protector. The world fucking knows what you guys are doing. We have the emails, we even have video footage where they're using children to massage adults using baby oil at the fucking Scientology locations. This isn't a fucking joke. Do your job, the world is watching.
Just as an FYI, before we move on to the next speaker, to the extent that you have concerns about felonious conduct, you may want to, or anybody who has complaints about that, may want to reach out to the D. A.'s office as the city attorney's office does not have the authority to prosecute felonies.
Asshole's actually right about that.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
That's right, yes. And on this wonderful day to celebrate Kevin De Leon, let's give him a hand. Wow, 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 fuck yeah. And let's go get the good work that he's doing in number twenty-one. Four properties. Look at this. For what? Affordable housing. How come you can't do this, Unisys? How come Kevin can do it? Oh, because Kevin gives a fuck. That's right, he does. Now we have speed bumps in C D. Two, the Paul Martin Krikorian speed bumps, he is a speed bump. A fucking nobody's speed bump. How fitting to put fucking speed bumps in a speed bump asshole district. And then we have a formal complaint with the C P. U. C. filed by Kevin. Kevin's going after these cocksuckers from the Union Pacific Railroad blocking. Oh, jeez, Christ, holy shit. That's right, that's right. He's turned informant, he's down in El Sereno, turning them in.
So, Mr. Timmer, if you were listening earlier, this item has been continued, so please move on to another item.
No, you're not going to hit, I have to. Ew, I told you not to do that. Ew. Let's get fucking down. I told you to look at that. I'm busy. Number twenty-four, is that open? Holy shit, that hurt my nose. Ew. So now we have Prop thirty-three, the Justice for Asshole Winner Act. To give the design policies to ensure landlords a reasonable return? Wait a minute. Authored by whom? Communist Soto Martinez Stalin and Nithya Raman Noodle? How can you do that? How can you be in favor of the private sector? You're violating your oath of communism. Let's give them a boo. Boo. That's right. I move to amend that we need to confiscate all of the rental properties from the landlords and give the fucking rent free to all of the Angelinos who vote for Kevin De Leon. Let's do that. Well, that's right. That's right, that's what we're gonna do. And Unisus agrees with me, don't you? Yes, you do.
Speaker, you've exhausted your time on that item?
Oh, okay. You're not gonna hit me? Why would I ever do that? Oh, number twenty-five. The ghetto district. Marquisy Sleazy wants an MLK junior school to close the pedestrian tunnel where they sell all the drugs to the kids? Let's give him a hand. Holy shit. Now you just put out a third of the drug dealers in your district, asshole.
General public comment.
Yes, and as today, Goat Puppet is formally endorsing Kevin DeLeon for reelection. Let's give him a hand. Well done. That's right. After listening to his opponent ripping the fucking LAPD apart, I realized, that's my job. I'm the one that criticizes LAPD, not the city council members. The city council members' job is to lick the boots of all the police, to suck the cocks of all of the police. That's the job over here on the horseshoe. My job is to be the critic. So I don't want anybody here on the council standing up to the cops. You got it, Unisus? You got it, Stalin? Over there, you got it? See, because when there's a problem and a woman is raped, they have no choice but to call nine-one-one and be on hold for thirty-five minutes. So after the rape is completed, they can do this. Finally, fuck the police, that's my role.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak on?
I already told you, Marquise, what does it say on your screen?
So as, I've told you before, I do not have the screen. So which items would you like to speak to? I'm gonna give you one minute for general, which items?
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
All right, so we're starting off with item fourteen. Item fourteen and fifteen are Marquise Harrison's appointments to the Charter Reform Commission. And make sure that people nominated to the Charter Reform Commission are ones who will actually reform the charter for the better instead of the worse. I see one of these came from like Weezer's office? That, that's kinda weird. Uh, but, but yeah, you have like, you know, Weezer staffers on the Charter Commission. So that's kinda interesting. Let's move on to item sixteen. Item sixteen is Walk of Fame Star. Maybe before you put the Walk of Fame Star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, you should repair the sidewalk so people don't trip, fall, and sue the city. Um, you know, increasing the deficit with all those liability payouts. So you could have, you could fix the walk, the sidewalk on the Walk of Fame so it's safe for people to walk on, then you can put the Hollywood Walk of Fame Star on there. Uh, we have item seventeen. Item seventeen is police funding in CD twelve from city staffer B. No on police funding in any council district. LAPD is, doesn't need more money, it needs less money. The LAPD is the number one reason we're in a deficit right now cuz the LAPD gets so much money, so much money for those, those, you know, that contract, you know. The LAPD doesn't need more money, it should defund and abolish the police. Now we have item seventeen. Item seventeen is, or wait, no, that was six, that was seventeen. Okay, so item nineteen, eighteen, I think? Eighteen is funding for services for unhoused people. Hopefully this is stuff that will actually get people housed and not just, you know, more sweeps and such. We have item nineteen, a motion from the racist Kevin DeLeon. That's nineteen, that's also nineteen, twenty-one, Nithya. Why are you seconding motions from Kevin DeLeon? I, I don't know where Nithya is, I don't, is she here? Um, but, but yeah. You saw Kevin be racist earlier today in the meeting. So you know he's still racist, why are you seconding his motions? So no, no on anything introduced by Kevin DeLeon. Twenty-four is Prop thirty-three, I think that's, I think that was okay, um, it's like more... All right, let's move on to general public comment. Marquise, why do you keep lowering my hand every time I call in to get public comment? I've called in to like every meeting for the last two weeks and I haven't been able to speak once. You know, I call in, I find you've lowered my hand, or at least my hand is for some reason lowered. Why, why, I, I'm not lowering it. I raise it, I, I don't lower it, but I find my hand lowered because clearly you don't want me to speak or something. Why do you keep lowering my hand? Or why is it being lowered like that? Um, so Kevin decided to be racist during today's meeting. You know, making comments about how people protesting him are rude or something. You know who was rude? The one who was making racist comments on the Fed tapes. The one who keeps assaulting people, verbally threatening us in the council chamber. Kevin is the racist one, need to resign.
I'll just do public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
A group of us are here and I'm with them to come before you to say, no more spending on the police. You wonder why you're being sued and paying out so much in lawsuits? A lot of it is going to families of people killed by the police. LAPD is murderous. We know that. Crime is down. We should be defunding the police completely instead of giving them every single penny that they want and even more on various side deals that the city does with them. This is a shameful city council who thinks that this city is gonna survive supporting this police department. It will not survive because this is a deadly city with a deadly police department. This has to stop and it has to stop now.
Uh, Jamie Cusick, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Jim McDonald represents Karen Bass's lack of interest even in paying liberal lip service to diversity and inclusion. Her election of yet another ancient white man to the highest throne of power in the city is further proof that LAPD is a patriarchal, white supremacist institution to its core. Her decision is an appeal to far-right Confederate flag conservatives who wish that McDonald had murdered even more black and brown folks during his infamous stints in Long Beach and his sheriff. This choice is dangerous, but it is also idiotic because we will get rid of McDonald even faster than we got rid of Charlie Beck and Michael Moore. There has never been more support for abolition in LA than there is right now. Even white women like Michelle and myself know that we are not served and are certainly not protected by police and that no one could be elected to this position that would actually serve the people's interests. And all have decided LAPD, LASD, LAPC, and their supporters is that you better find another line of work before your job ceases to exist. Fire Chief McDonald.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call more names.
Okay, so before the next speaker begins, I'm just gonna, just as an FYI, um, for anyone who's giving public comment, we can hear you. Please do not yell under the microphone, especially if you're really close like this. Um, the interpreters are interpreting into Spanish in real time and they're wearing headphones. So it also actually is easier to hear you if you're a little bit further from the mic. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, item seventeen and then all the Kevin DeLeon items.
So I'm gonna give you three minutes for the items and then we'll go.
And you can't comment on twenty-three, correct?
And you have one minute for general.
I'm asking you, you can't comment on twenty-three?
Twenty-three has been continued, so it is not open for public comment.
Okay.
So you have three minutes for the other items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
All right, so today is O two-two, a day of action against police, the police state against police brutality and repression. It's also the day that this council will gift fifty thousand dollars to the LAPD overtime account that is already allocated at least two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars a year. This happens as our budget is in crisis due to a budget deficit. Yes, Papa. Caused by giving historic amounts of money to LAPD. That's something that, that's the something going on that Krikorian was referring to earlier. He didn't wanna name it. Now, arrests in Skid Row in July of twenty-twenty-four were over twenty times the number they were in July twenty-twenty-three and over half of those arrested were black. LAPD is overseen by Earl Southers, the founder of a Santa Monica PAC program that led to the molestation of over two-hundred children. LAPD has stolen the lives of Meli Carrato, Takar Smith, Valentina Oriana Peralta, and unfortunately the list goes on. LAPD has targeted Melina Abdullah by swatting her house. LAPD has done, arrested and beat many of us here in the audience today. And LAPD was caught tailing my partner, the beautiful mother of this child. We're ending here in May. Again, this is all, the money that you sent to police, this is what they're doing with it, okay? Now fuck the police. Some say that this phrase is disqualifier for public office, but apparently being racist means you're qualified for public office. Dehumanizing a black bully means you're qualified for public office. Plotting to disenfranchise black people means you're qualified for public office, but saying fuck the police, wow, that's far enough. Now, we read about the LAPD this winter reports were pigs who the department finds guilty of things like inappropriately handcuffing or sinifying persons about cause, illegally conducting a search after consent was withdrawn, failing to report misconduct to a department supervisor, approving overtime reports for hours of work not performed for subordinates, all without consequence and all from patrol. What this money is going towards. And all you wanna do is fund their violence, their harm, their corruption because you are the gatekeeper to that. You unleash these people in our communities every chance you get. I'm going to public comment now.
Okay, so you have one minute.
So Kevin DeLeon, this might be the last time I see you before you take that L in November. I wanna remind people that you are a predator. You are suing me for stalking while parading around your diehard supporter Najee Ali, a man who has stalked numerous black women. How do we know that? Look no further than the numerous restraining orders granted against him. See, we deal with facts, like how you have your campaign literally following around Isabel Helado's fifteen-year-old daughter. Fifteen years old and your campaign staff is following her around. All right, you target children, that's what you like to do. Your canvassers are threatening people, throwing out box, box cutters, following Isabel supporters to their cars after debates. Kevin, you always talk about single mothers working, especially your mother who worked her fingers to the bone. All about demonizing a single mother that beat you in the primary and will beat you come November fifth. And again, you wanna say that she was racist against Latino men? We don't forget, you're the racist one, Kevin. You're the racist one. You're the one that's used the media to wage your anti-black campaign against people like me, against organizations like BLM LA and LA CAN, against organizers like Jimmy Del Ban.
Your time has expired. Mr. Reedy, you have already been warned, so please vacate the podium or you'll be subject to removal. Mr. President, Mr. Reedy is eligible for removal as he was warned earlier in this meeting. We have asked him to please vacate the podium and he is still disrupting this meeting.
Please remove Mr. Reedy. Your excuse from the meeting, Mr. Reedy. Your excuse from the meeting, Mr. Reedy.
Mr. Reedy, we cannot continue this meeting until you exit the room quietly. Okay, next speaker.
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead. Actually, hold on, before we start our time, and actually, can you restart our time? Can, we just need to wait for the room to quiet down so we can hear you. We'll restart your time. So sergeants, I, I believe I hear Camille Lewis as well. Can you please confirm that? Ms. Lewis, you have been warned already, actually multiple times. So again, please do not disrupt this meeting or you will be subject to removal pursuant to Rule seven and Rule twelve. Okay, so let's try this again. Go ahead, you have one minute for general public comment.
Um, I am speaking on a general comment. Uh, first of all, my name is Catherine Walker. Um, I'm speaking on the McDowell that you got, McDonald, the guy that you, that you guys are trying to appoint for the new police chief, okay? I've stood before Police Chief Moore. Uh, first, I wanted to introduce, uh, this is my son, Greshario Mack. This is my son, Greshario Mack. He was killed by LAPD two thousand twenty, two thousand eighteen. I'm here as a mother crying for the justice of my son. Yes, you guys may say, oh, I wanna pay this mother because we took their son's life, but guess what? No amount of money can take, can pay for the life of my son. And you guys are appointing these guys into your office that say that they can't do anything about these police officers that's killing our children. I pray that God places the right man upon the podium and upon, upon these bitches.
Your time has expired.
To give us justice. I'm a grieving mother, my son's birthday is instantly to be killed.
But we have to give, we have to give the same amount of time to everyone, so. So, Speaker, we have to give the same amount of time to everybody.
Her time has expired. The time has expired. We're gonna ask you to leave the podium, thank you so much.
Okay, so everybody who's yelling out, this is your only warning. Please do not disrupt this meeting. Sergeants, I can identify the gentleman who's about maybe eight rows back in the hat with the beard, um, was yelling out disrupting this meeting. I see the... The woman in the white blouse, again, please do not disrupt this meeting. We have to give everybody the same amount of time during public comment. If you would like, you are also welcome to submit written public comments to the clerk's office as well. And to the extent you have materials that you would like to share with this council, you can give them to the sergeants and they will make sure that they are circulated. Mr. Spindler, please do not disrupt this meeting.
TJ, general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Uh, firstly, Stop Cop City, Stop Cop Nation. Um, secondly, LAPD has a proven and undeniable history of violence, racism, and murder of black, brown, and indigenous communities. LAPD has a hundred-and-fifty-five-year legacy of brutality from Rodney King to Ezel Ford in Keenan Anderson. We overwhelmingly reject Jim McDonald's potential appointment as LAPD chief. His failed leadership at the corrupt Los Angeles Sheriff's Department has allowed nurtured and grown racist deputy gangs. They flourished under his failed leadership and the increased violence and death under his department cannot be ignored or overlooked. Reject McDonald's appointment. Also, again, Stop Cop Nation. We demand that LA City Council pass a moratorium on funding or any support of any cop city projects. Secondly, and again, Stop Cop City.
Next speaker.
Thank you. The rent is just too damn high. And we see the proof on our streets every day. The rent is just too damn high. Vote yes on Prop thirty-three. Allow yourselves, the city, and all of us to be able to control rents, to be able to keep people in their homes. Yes, on Prop thirty-three.
Um, Audit LA, um, and I, I wanna talk on fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and maybe more, so that...
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
Okay, the first one is fifteen. I'm gonna ask that you make sure that the person being approved for the Charter Reform Commission is a high-level Scientologist. Um, because Scientology has the real power in this city, okay? Cuz I've come to every single department, meeting, everything, to get non-ADA-approved sidewalk, I mean, planters removed and none of y'all can do it. Uh, Mr. Martinez, Soto Marti, are you here? Not listening, none of you are listening, I know. But, um, he can't even get it done. So make sure you get a Scientologist on here because... So make sure you get a Scientologist on here because they have the real power in this Number 16. Kerry Washington. Sadly, I don't know who Kerry Washington is, but that's a Hollywood thing, you know, like that whole Hollywood Walk of Fame thing. Why is City Council dealing with that when we have real issues? You know, we have issues like what's going on here in this room, all these issues, housing issues, police issues, pothole issues, non-ADA compliance of an entire city. Let's add the cult of Scientology to that mix. So why are we worried? Why are you guys bothering with these stars? I would like to know what Smoke and Scan thinks about you guys having to work on that, I'm curious. 17. Okay, definitely. LAPD, you know, and I'm not somebody that hates all cops, I don't. I mean, DeWarte's pretty cool, and these guys here are pretty cool. I don't hate all cops, but I hate bad cops, and I hate bad policing and bad police ideas. I also hate that they get half the city budget and like nothing gets resolved. I mean, you guys, you know, I get the overtime because, you know, like certain protesters are being swatted all the time, and so that might create a lot of overtime. But what I would suggest to help fill the, if you need more money for the overtime, is to fine Scientology for all the swatting calls, okay? So far, we have figured out it's probably close to a quarter of a million dollars of city resources being wasted against protesters of Scientology, okay? That's a lot of money. That's a lot more than 200, I mean, 50,000. Why don't you go after the people who are making swatting calls? I'm on topic, because I'm saying...
Speaker, you've exhausted your minute on this item. I know, but you've exhausted your minute on this item, so please move on to another item.
I'm sorry?
You have exhausted your one minute on this item, so please move on to another item.
Okay, well, then, let's do, let's get, that won't fair housing, let's get more housing for the people that need it. Thank you.
General public comment?
Yes, for a public comment. I've been coming to City Hall, whether online or in person, now since June, okay, with a simple ask. This is a simple one, an easy one. And again, the only one who pays attention here is Mr. McCosker, he's the only one. And, you know, I appreciate that, Mr. McCosker. But I want the planters at Elron Hubbard Way and Fountain to A, be permitted, like you go after everyone else when they don't permit their, you know, things, and you fine them when they don't listen. And I want them ADA compliant, they are not. There's a three, four-block radius now that I cannot get on or off, any, you know, any vehicle that needs a ramp, because you guys won't do your job. Mr. Martinez's office is always saying, you know, he did say, thankfully, yeah, they're working on it, but it seems like nobody knows who does what, like, you know, is it Brer Street Services? Who does what? Can you just remove or make ADA compliant these planters? I know it's a minor issue for everyone else, but not for me. Thank you.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Timitriyan Ash, and my son Christopher Okamoto was killed by law This has devastated our family. I'm still fighting. It's been six years that I have gotten justice. I have been taking this back and forth to court for years, and we still have not got justice yet. I'm a mother of seven, and I still long for my son Christopher Okamoto, and I just want law enforcement to step up and just stop the violence, because it's killing not just my children, you know, everyone else that's around here, and we just need for police brutality to stop. You know, I'm grieving still, as you guys can see, I'm shaking. It's been six long years, and I'm still fighting. I have here my grandson that Christopher never got a chance to meet, and we're going to continue fighting. We just want you guys to stop the violence and increase the peace.
Okay, so, thank you.
Christopher Okamoto, say his name.
Christopher Okamoto.
I heard Camille Lewis, who has been warned multiple times, Council President, if you would like, she is also subject to removal at this point. I can see the gentleman in the cap in the very back who's standing up, has also been disrupting this meeting. This is your first and only formal warning. Again, please do not disrupt other people's public comment. All right, the woman who's standing next to, I believe she is just maybe a row or two behind Mr. Spindler, and has her hair in two buns and is wearing a white mask, this is your first and only formal warning. Please do not disrupt this, and she's flipping me off now, so it is that individual. Please do not disrupt this meeting. All right, go ahead. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment, my name's Akili, and I want to connect to the last speaker. Today is October 22nd, National Day to Stop Police Brutality. And what the last speaker talked about was police brutality. And we are calling for an end to police brutality and an end to stop cop nations, because we are creating a militarized police force. And so we are here today to speak out, first against police brutality, second against cop cities, and then finally, we are here to speak out and oppose the appointment of Jim McDonald as police chief. He has failed every place he has been. And if you want a failed police chief, you got it with Jim McDonald's, and we oppose him. Thank you.
Libraries are one of the few places in our society where all are welcome regardless of socioeconomic status, regardless of mental health, regardless of addiction. I believe with all of my heart in this mission that libraries are for everyone. I also believe that everyone deserves to feel safe in the library, including staff. Times have changed, libraries have changed. The support systems, training, and resources for the Los Angeles Public Library staff, they have not changed. Libraries are now community and service-centric. Personal safety is a real daily concern for the Los Angeles Public Library system employees. We are no longer equipped to do this work alone without safeguards in place. We need a comprehensive safety plan. Please. Please take care of your city workers so that they can take care of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
A city council that allows a man who spouted racist things and tried to remove or weaken Black voting power in the city of Los Angeles, but allows, but doesn't allow for mothers, for mothers who came all their way from, took time out of their day to come here and speak in front of you. A council that allows one but doesn't allow the other does not represent the people. A council that allows someone to, for three minutes, to say racial slurs, but kicks out the person that tries to correct that, cannot represent the people. And we wonder why our systems, our world, our city looks the way it is, because we have leaders like this, because we have leaders that allow racism and prejudice, but kick out people who try to address it, who try to stop people from speaking who try to address it. This is an indictment not only on this city council, but on the people...
Speaker, your time has expired. Again, we cannot choose what we want to hear more than anyone else. So, Speaker, this is your only warning. Please vacate the podium. Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Malina Abdullah, all items.
So you have three minutes for the items, and I assume general public comment?
So, I'm here today with my students, with my students. I brought students from my graduate class on intersectional Blackness to come to a community event. This is supposed to be one of the most tame community events they can come to, and they're here to listen to the voices of the people and watch them engage in the process of civic engagement.
Speaker, I need you to speak to the items first. You're welcome to speak to this during general public comment.
They're watch, they're here to watch you engage in the process of civic engagement. Instead, they were locked out, they were told that this forum was full, they were told that this forum was full when half the seats were empty. They were told that they watched as you quieted mothers of those who've been killed by police on this National Day to Stop Police Brutality. They've watched you as you haven't engaged, you've whispered on the side as a grieving mother showed you the ashes of her son. This is shameful. This is shameful. Marquise, I know you. I know you. I know the mayor. Have y'all forgotten who you are and who you're supposed to stand for? You know, we're tired of a misleadership class. We're tired of people like Kevin DeLeón, who was once my student, and then revealed who he is as an anti-Black, anti-Indigenous racist, as a hater of renters and poor people. We're tired of this misleadership class that continues to betray community, that continues to sic police on us, that continues to do the work of white supremacist capitalism. We're here to say that your days as a misleadership class are numbered.
Speaker, your time has expired. We need to move on to the other speakers. Speaker, this is your only warning. We need to move on to the next speaker. So I need you to vacate the podium, please, so we can move on to the next speaker. And just as an FYI for everybody who is a regular attendee or anybody who, this is their first time here, so I understand that people have a lot of opinions and are very passionate about things that are said or things that they would like to say. But just to be clear, the rules that require us to provide equal amount of time to everyone regardless of viewpoint are not things that are within the control of this council. So, and the Brown Act is state law that we have to comply with. So again, it is not something that this council has authority to change on its own. Good afternoon. If you could please remind us... All right, so, Camille Lewis, you have been warned multiple times and are subject to potential removal if the chair would like. I would also note that the gentleman in the hat in the back who's standing next to the kiosk has also been warned, as well as the gentleman in the hat with the beard in the very back as well. So, anybody who is yelling out is disrupting this meeting. We cannot continue with the next public speaker.
I don't need an expert, I don't need a board, I'll do my own.
Okay, so the gentleman in the bucket hat has been warned multiple times, Council President, again, I do not know if the chair would like him removed or not. Good morning, sorry, good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to? Okay, I need everybody to stop their applause so we can continue with public comment. Camille Lewis, this is your fifth or sixth warning, I've lost count.
My fellow librarians are here today to bring to your attention some of the most dire issues facing our libraries. We grapple with verbal abuse, general and sexual harassment, drug abuse, violence, and intimidation, as well as unsanitary conditions. This daily threat to our physical safety while at work, serving our communities, has created an unsustainable level of mental trauma among our workers. Librarians turn to library administration and get offered mental health apps on their phone and trainings on self-care, but no amount of breathing techniques can prevent the next chair from being tossed at your head. Council members, we're asking you today to check in on your libraries in your districts, visit them, see what they are dealing with firsthand, listen when the library workers say they need civil service security officers, unarmed, who care about the mission of the library. Listen when we say that contract security staff has led to inconsistent staffing levels and leave us most vulnerable. Thank you for listening this morning.
City Council, I'm here today just to reiterate what you have heard from a couple of the librarians. There is a dire need for the city to do something. The workers are in danger, their lives are in danger. We want something to be done before one of them gets killed. And I don't say that lightly, I say that seriously. So as my forever First Lady said, do something.
Okay, and before we move on to virtual public comment, Council President, I believe, I believe there is a motion that is still waiting to be introduced. So, Council Member Yarszlofski. Speaker, in-person public comment has been closed. Again, as stated during the directions, we try to get to as many people as possible. As noted, we have had multiple disruptions throughout this meeting, including this one. So, we have taken almost an hour and a half of public comment in chambers. So, I need everybody...
These two gentlemen on the side are disrupting the meeting. You guys are just, you guys are excused from the meeting.
Okay, everyone who is still shouting out, this is your only warning, or to the extent that you have been warned multiple times, you are subject to removal. That includes the two gentlemen who are standing on the left-hand side of council chambers. That includes Camille Lewis, who has received now seven or eight warnings. It includes the, essentially, everybody who's standing up and chanting. This is your only warning.
Mr. City Attorney, we're going to put the council in recess and clear the chambers.
Okay, clearly, to members of the public, the Council President has voiced his intention to potentially recess the meeting. If we cannot maintain order to continue with virtual public comment, then this, then this council will go into recess until we can obtain order. Okay, this is our last opportunity. Sergeants, I'm going to need help to get the room under control, or else the Council President would like to go into recess.
Yes, this council is now in recess.
Today was one of the most embarrassing meetings. You don't have to love the presidential candidate vice president to Malina Abdullah to hear what she said today. She brought people down for civic engagement, and this is just an embarrassment. And it's an embarrassment because of the draconian policies. And I do think somebody suggested Hernandez ought to be the head of budget and finance. It's not a bad choice. And Matt Zabo, after years of diligent work, ought to quit, because he's in over his head. This is just a snarl. And Krikorian gets all the credit and all the blame. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Gold, I'm tired of, you know, every time you warn people, you know, either have the balls to throw somebody out, or, Camille Lewis, seven times you threatened to throw her out, yet Camille and Michelle Dumont and that other knucklehead, you know, they're the ones that brought violence to City Council. They are the ones that attacked seniors. They are the ones that bludgeoned, literally just beat the hell out of a Jewish man with a computer. Why do you allow that? Why does that weak president, I'm sorry, he looks sharp today with his tie on, but my God, he's got to show some balls in there and start to enforce what the rules are. But please, don't give one, don't give seven, give none, and get, make, take control of the City Council again. It's an embarrassment, sir. It's an embarrassment. Thank you.
Cola, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure, this doesn't necessarily need to be said, I'm sure everyone is excited about the upcoming World Series between us and New York Yankees. I know the whole city's excited. This in front of me is the trophy from the last time we faced them in the World Series, which is in 1981, and of course, we won that World Series. And so we are going to be establishing a little challenge between our City Council and the New York City Council, and hopefully we can have, you know, in the good spirit of sportsmanship, just want to make sure that, just want to announce that we're excited. But we don't have to worry, because the Dodgers aren't going to lose this. And so we're just excited to make that announcement, and we'll have further details on that tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lee, and excited about those details, and I assume you were the shortstop on the Dodgers then, that's why you have that trophy? Okay. Any other announcements? Thank you, Mr. Spindler, for your hearty laugh. Go forth, serve the city, do great work. This meeting is adjourned.